Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May twenty-sixth, uh, twenty-twenty-one zoning board meeting. Our next meeting will be June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, seven o'clock P. M., same room. Rod, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the scope of liberty and justice for all.
Patrick, have the preamble?
I do. All right, good evening to those in attendance and watching from home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. Petitions will be heard in the order that they appear on the agenda, however, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners with, uh, I'm sorry, the board will treat all petitioners, the representatives of butters and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through the responses to the criteria applicable to the case, allowing the board to ask questions for each, after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant the approval to a petition, and it's, is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criteria. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into a back-and-forth arguments. All comments made shall be directed toward the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing, the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
Would anyone who is looking to speak tonight, either in for or against or regarding a petition, please raise your right hand? You sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you. All right, so I'll go ahead and, uh, so for our attendance, there's four of us right now. Uh, we are expecting a fifth member to be joining us. However, uh, they will not be able to hear the first petition. Uh, so the only thing that I have to point out is that it still requires three people to vote in favor for a motion to pass. Should two members vote in favor and two vote against, the motion will fail. So with that being said, I'll call up, uh, Mark and Rebecca Livingston, petitioner, Rebecca Zanani. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Uh, variance under section three point oh-five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of an attached garage, seventeen feet from the property line, whereas thirty feet is required. Parcels located at thirty-one Gale Road in the R-four residential district, tax map two B lot eighty-nine, case ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash oh-nine. And, um, if you could, please take a seat. Do we not have the board for them to write their, to sign in?
Uh, no, we do not have the sign-in sheet tonight, so we just asked that anyone that's presenting tonight to speak their name very clearly for the record.
Okay. So if you could both please just state your names into the microphone.
Chairman, members of the zoning board, address, and fellas, it's Rebecca Livingston.
Okay. Um, is the, is the microphone lit up? It should be bright green.
Oh, now it is.
Okay. If you could just please, uh, repeat your names for our record.
Rebecca Livingston.
Okay.
Mark Livingston.
Do we take these off or leave them on?
Uh, you, you can take them off as long as you're sitting, so same goes for us.
No, we will take it off.
Also state your addresses, will please.
Yes. Okay, we come to you tonight, um, as you said, for the variance under section three oh-five, uh, the construction of the attached garage, seventeen feet from the property line, whereas thirty feet is required. The parcel is located at thirty-one Gale Road in the R-four, uh, residential district, tax map two B lot, um, zero eight nine.
Okay. Um, so this seems, uh, pretty straightforward. I know we get a lot of requests for, uh, detached garages. So if you could, um, just please step us through the, the variance criteria and just pause at the end of each one in case we have questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
In order to permit, so we're seeking a variance from the town of Merrimack to be granted to us under the special circumstances to use our property to build a garage that does not meet thirty-foot setback in the terms of the zoning ordinance. In reference to number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the variance is not contrary to the public interest because the proposed garage does not conflict with the explicit or implicit purpose of the ordinance. It does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, uh, number two?
In reference to number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the spirits of the audience, ordinance is observed because the proposed garage will uphold the spirit of the ordinance and allow ample space for the town to access utilities.
All right, thank you, and I'm actually gonna pause right here. Um, Lynn, we just got started with the first petition. Um, do you wanna listen through and participate in voting?
Sure.
All right, thank you. So we do-
Rebecca, I'm Rebecca Livingston, nice to meet you.
Thank you, so you continue on to three?
I apologize for being late.
Oh, no worries.
Oh, no worries, thank you. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because substantial justice is done because the benefit of the proposed garage does not outweigh the harm to the general public.
All right, any questions? All right, on to four.
In reference to number four, granting the variance would not diminish the values of the surrounding properties because the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. The proposed garage will raise the property value of the house we attach the, the, um, future appraisal. The proposed garage will have a positive effect on the neighboring house's property values.
Any questions? All right?
In reference, oh, I'm sorry. In reference to number five, unnecessary hardship, owing to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from the other properties in the area, explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public, purpose of the ordinance provision, and the special application of the provision to the property. The property at thirty-one Gale Road is burdened by the zoning restriction of a thirty-foot setback from the road. The proposed, the purpose of the zoning restriction in question is to allow the town or utility supplier to access the underground wires. The proposed plan for the garage allows ample space for the town or utility supplier to still access the underground wires. We enclosed plans within our application. To see, to set the proposed garage back will cause unnecessary financial burden because recently built deck, a permit we received from the town, uh, will need to be cut into altering the deck, the patio, and the pool in the backyard. Because of the special conditions of the property, the restrictions as applied to the property does not serve that purpose in a fair and substantial way. B, the, do you want me to pause or?
Oh, no, you can continue, I'm sorry.
That's okay, sir. B, the proposed use is a reasonable one because the special conditions of the property, thirty-one Gale Road mentioned above, causes the proposed garage to be reasonable. The proposed garage does not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. So basically, uh, we wanna do this garage to improve our neighborhood. We love Merrimack, wanna make it our forever home, and that's why we are here for this.
Well, thank you. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions at all? Yeah, I was going to ask about the, about the deck and the placement of the garage.
The deck would go, uh, right up flush, I mean, the, the garage would go right up flush to the deck.
Uh, what I meant was, uh-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, why, why not just move it to where the deck is, but it looks like it would still be within that setback, anyway?
You, what, you mean tear the deck down and?
Well, I was just curious from the, from logistics, if you were to like, you know, tear the deck down, where would it be? But it sounds like it would be within that thirty-foot setback, no matter what you did, so even under, under strict adherence.
The, um, the house is, it's a split level, so in one reason, um, personally, I don't think it makes it visually appealing when they just continue it on as one, one thing.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Um, the other purpose too is we just, well, it'd be more than ten thousand now to do another deck with the price of lumber, but to, you know, we did the trek deck, did a beautiful deck, to have to rip that down, to cut into it, is a financial burden that we, we still have children in college-
Oh, completely understood.
-are paying and trying to get the garage done before we retire so that we can have it paid off before we retire. It's our, our goal and pay for college, so, and not, another ten thousand to put another deck on would, would be very costly. Besides, I also think it gives very, uh, much better curb appeal for the town and the neighborhood to have it-
Oh, agreed.
To make it look pretty, I guess is what the underlying way.
All right, the same-
But it, it would still, um, where DigSafe made all the lines and whatnot of the wires, it's well back from where all of that is, is set. Um, we have a lamp post and it wouldn't go further than when the, the lamp post is where the driveway is already.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any final questions? All right, so this seems very, very, uh, cut and dry. Um, so thank you for your presentation. Um, we do have to open up the public session, so what I would ask is that you please, uh, move back to your seat.
Okay.
Um, in case anyone wants to speak either in favor or against.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Oh, absolutely, thank you.
Hope you have a nice evening, stay dry. Hopefully that's enough.
Okay, it's gonna get worse, you oughta see the clouds. They are black.
So, opening up the public session, is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone that's looking to speak against this petition? All right, we'll close the public session for deliberation.
This is Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, petition for Mark and Rebecca Livingston, petitioner, and Rebecca Zanoni, owner, variance section three point zero-five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of an attached garage seventeen feet from the property line, whereas thirty feet is required. The parcel is located at thirty-one Gale Road in R-four residential district, tax map two B lot zero eight nine, case number ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash zero-nine.
I'll second that.
All right, motion made by, uh, Patrick, seconded by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All oppose, all against, so five, zero, zero, so it passes. Um, the, the only thing that I can say though is there's a thirty-day window where someone could appeal this if they want to. Uh, but otherwise, uh, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you very much, all of you.
All right, thank you. You too.
As I managed to get all my papers out of order.
All right, second, uh, petition is Andre Roy, petitioner-owner, variance under section three point oh-five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a detached, uh, eleven, or detached garage eleven feet from the side property line, whereas fifteen feet is required. Parcel is located at sixteen Belmont Drive in the R-one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts and wellhead protection area, tax map sixty, lot two fifty-seven, case ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash ten. And if you could please, uh, state your name per the record, and if you'd like, you can take your mask off.
Hi, I'm Andre Roy, sixteen Belmont Drive, Merrimack, and I'm proposing a twenty-four by twenty-four detached garage. Yes, yes. A little far from me. I also have a letter from my neighbor to help out. He, he never received the registered letter.
Oh, that's-
So that's the budding neighbor that's, I'm kinda short of.
Oh, no worries. I, i- if you'd like, um, what I would ask that you do is at the end of the presentation, read it in.
Okay.
Um, 'cause we can't technically take anything from you.
Okay, that's fine.
So, um, if you wanna go ahead and just step through the variance criteria?
Number one?
Yep.
You want me to read everything out?
Uh, yes, please.
Creating the variance of, who would not be a contrary of the public interest because adding the garage would enhance the property and also be a, uh, nicer for the-
Any questions from the board?
Be more appealing.
Please continue.
Number two, the spirit of ordinance is observed because we'll still maintain, maintain front and back setbacks, front and rear setbacks according to the code.
All right, any questions from the board?
I actually do. I had, we, so we got these, um, diagram.
Yes.
And it shows, uh, the house, it shows the deck, shows proposed garage.
Yeah.
And it shows something behind it that's twenty-five by twenty-five.
Twenty-five by twenty-five.
It's behind the house.
There's, there's nothing twenty-five, oh, septic system, Litchfield.
Okay.
That's why there's no other place for me to put it.
Okay, so that's, okay, I was wondering why that was on the diagram, I, I didn't-
Yeah, the septic system's in the front, Litchfield's in the back.
Then you have a shed way, way, way back?
Way in the back.
Okay.
All right, cool, that's all. All right, please continue.
Number three, greeting of the variance would be substantial to justice because it will allow better use of the property. It would match the existing garage around the neighborhood.
Any questions from the board? All right, go ahead.
Number four, creating the variance of, would diminish in value of surrounding property because garage would add to the property value of a neighborhood and allow better use of the property. I'm good.
All right.
And if you see, it's, 'cause the house is crooked on the lot. Mm-hmm. So it's thirteen feet from the fence on one side and eleven from the other.
Yeah.
It's kinda weird, I don't know, I, we didn't design it, we just bought it like that.
Yeah.
Well, you're not, you're not alone in that case.
I'm sure.
There are a lot of houses in Merrimack that are situated like that, so.
Particularly in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And you really, couldn't really really tell until you really pay attention, you know? I thought maybe they went with the, the street 'cause the street is a little, little of an angle, but.
All right, and if you wanna go ahead and, uh, read in unnecessary hardship?
What's that?
Uh, item five, the unnecessary hardship?
Five A.
Five A. Owning the following special condition of the property and distinguish is from other priority of the area, explain how no fair is substantial relationship exist between general public and purpose of the ordinance provided or presi- provision of the specified application and provision of the property. Cannot use side property because of setbacks requirement and without variance will let me use a property. Could not place garage anywhere else on the property because of the setback and a septic system.
All right, you can go ahead and, uh, read in five B as well.
Five B. The proposed use of the res- 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 what is it? Reasonable of the, is because it will allow to use a property that will enhance owner ability to maximize use of the property.
And, um, I would definitely accept that as unnecessary hardship, um, just given the way the property layout is. So with that being said, um, is there anything, if you'd like to go ahead and read that letter in?
Yeah, I did bring the original plans also, if you need to see those.
We, we have, we, we're also, but if you wanna read the letter in.
To whom may, may concern, I, Anthony Burnett, resident at fourteen Belmont Drive and have no issues with the garage being built at the residence of Andre Roy at sixteen Belmont Drive. I did not receive the letter mentioned, so I am, had to write this permission to build for the garage and sign his name.
Excellent. All right, in that case, uh, what I would like to do now is open up the public portion, so if I could have you, uh, return to your seat and then we'll deliberate. Thank you. All right, I will go ahead and open the public portion. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone looking to speak against this petition? All right, we will go ahead and close the public portion of this, and, uh, do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Andre Roy, petitioner-owner, variance under section three point zero-five of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a detached garage eleven feet from the side property line, whereas fifteen feet is required. The parcel is located at sixteen Belmont Drive in the R-one residential by soils, aquifer conservation districts, and wellhead protection area, tax map sixty, lot two five seven, case number ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash ten.
I'll second. Go ahead, Rod.
I'll second.
I think that generally speaking, a lot of the houses, especially older homes, especially out on Bel- Belmont, aren't necessarily squared off as best as they should be when it comes to the property line, so, uh, I really don't see that this being an issue of-
Oh, completely agree.
Especially if you wanna put a garage in like a night like tonight, you don't wanna be getting soaked, so.
Absolutely. All right, so the motion was made by Patrick, seconded by Rod. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So, five, zero, zero, same as last time, the motion does pass. However, your neighbors do have thirty days, or anyone has thirty days to, uh, appeal this if they choose, so if you start construction the next thirty days, you do so at your own risk. But otherwise, uh, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next petition, Leonard Amadeo and Amadeo Revocable Trust, um, variance under section two point oh-two, point seven, point eight, point six of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a detached garage ten feet from the edge of a wetland, whereas forty feet is required. Parcel is located at fourteen Acacia Street in the R-one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts, tax map four C, lot seventy-four, case ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash eleven. And, uh, good evening, gentlemen, if I could just have you state your name.
Robert Shepherd, representing Lynn Amadeo, who's the trustee of the trust that owns the property. This is Lynn, right here with me. He and his wife, um, have lived in this property since nineteen eighty-four, and they are the owners of the revocable trust that owns the property. Just by way of quick background, this is a, uh, lot that's almost two acres in size, one point nine five oh acres, eighty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five square feet. Um, this appears to be detached garage night for Merrimack, but, um, Lynn and his wife are looking to build a twelve-foot by twenty-four-foot detached garage. Lynn and his wife have come about this kind of a, in, in a long way. Um, if you have your package in front of you, if you look at exhibit A, um, what Lynn did and his wife did is they relocated the drainage easement that went right near their house. I don't know if you can see that or not, and they extended it out with the thinking that he'd be able to build the twelve-foot by twenty-four-foot, uh, single-stall garage. Um, and he did accomplish that this year with the cooperation of the town of Merrimack. Uh, deed was signed for the new drainage easement. And then if you look at exhibit B, that shows the presently existing drainage easement, and it shows the location of the proposed garage. And it's ten feet in the back from, uh, the wetland area where it should be forty feet. I'll go over the criteria at this point.
Absolutely.
Uh, first, uh, as stated, Lynn and his wife have lived there for approximately thirty-seven years. This variance would allow them to add a twelve-foot by twenty-four-foot one-stall garage, which would provide a secure place for the storage of personal property in the parking of a vehicle. Uh, this requested use is a permitted use. Lynn would tell you that he has a temporary garage right where he's proposing to put this new structure. Um, it's been there for ten years. Um, this new structure would be much better than the temporary garage. Um, Lynn would also tell you, I think, is, you know, his plan, he's retiring very soon, and he's hoping to have a place to put his stuff, his lawn stuff and his equipment, um, as well as perhaps a workshop to do a little bit of work, so that's why he's looking for this garage. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, um- Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say congratulations.
Thank you, I think you won.
I don't know if I have any questions. Yes, okay. Number two, the proposed construction of the one-stall garage, as I said, would replace the portable or temporary garage that's been there. If, uh, the construction of this garage is permitted in this residential use, the location is really the only location, I think, that Lynn could put it, and, uh, with the other issues on the lot, this is really the only place that he could put it. Um, so that's what he's looking for, why he's looking to locate it there. Number three, the granting of the variance will do substantial justice because it will allow Lynn and his wife to better use their property and to efficiently and safely store their personal property and a vehicle. Um, as I indicated to you before, Lynn and his wife went through a fairly lengthy process to relocate this drainage easement, and, um, he would tell you that really the wetlands that's on his property, um, is really, if you're looking at this, uh, the exhibits, it's, and you're looking at the house straight on, it's to the left.
To the south.
To the south. Um, and he really doesn't believe that this will impact the wetlands. It does come very close to the drainage easement, uh, but does not believe that it impacts the wetlands at all. Uh, the construction of the garage is going to be con- similar to his house, which is a very nice house. It'll match, um, architecturally and aesthetically with the house. It'll have the same shingles, the same siding, the same look. It's our position that the granting of the variance will not diminish values of surrounding property. Again, it's going to be a pleasant structure that he's going to build. Um, it will be consistent with his house. It will add value to his home. I'm sure his real estate taxes will go up as a result of the construction of this garage, and it will enhance other properties in the area. The unnecessary hardship, really the unnecessary hardship here is the location of, uh, and the uniqueness of the lot. It's a large lot, but there is a, there's always been a drainage easement right by his house. Uh, I think Lynn would tell you too, that there's not, it's not as if there's water that goes through this drainage easement. Um, it may be on a periodic basis, it's really, is it a swale more than a?
No, it, that area where the, where the old drainage easement was is all lawn, and it's, it's been graded and all, um, and so we moved it, um, and got approval from the town of, um, from the town council on April eighth, um, to re- to re- to relocate the drainage easement more in line with where a drainage culvert exists that I put in, in two thousand twelve, um, that was permitted by the town of Merrimack because there was flooding in, in that area to the south of where the drainage easement was. The, the Department of Public Works, Dawn and Kyle at the Department of Public Works, stated at the town council meeting on April eighth that it never should have been located where it is. Um, it should have been located, if at all, further south where we, where we ended up moving it to, um, on the April eighth, uh, town council meeting.
And so that, that kinda makes the lot unique in, in the sense of the drainage easement kind of going right through the middle of the lot. The proposal is a reasonable one, it's a permitted use, it's consistent with other residential uses in the area. The garage will be aesthetically pleasing, it will replace a temporary garage that's been there for approximately ten years. It will allow Lynn and his wife to better, more Lynn, to better use his property, to put his tools away and his, his other things away. Um, and really, there's no other reasonable location for him to put this small, one-car garage. And then under, uh, the other section-
Actually, you know, does he?
Yeah, I, I think unnecessary hardship is-
You, you covered it, yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Excellent. Are there any questions from the board regarding this petition?
I mean, it's pretty straightforward, I mean, these, these are just, you know, again, it's another part of Merrimack where some of the lots and not always conforming and, yeah. I don't, I don't see it being a hazard to the neighborhood. And he's already moved the wetland, so.
And he's already using it for that purpose anyway, so it's just-
Yeah.
Makes, makes perfect sense, so, uh, with that being said-
Did you have a question?
I'm good.
All right, in that case-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we doing a public hearing, I guess?
Yep. And I'll now go ahead and open the public portion. Um, is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone that's looking to speak against this petition? All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the, the public piece here.
Yeah, I'll go through for three. Yeah, I'll go through for three. Motion to approve Leonard Amadeo petitioner and Amadeo Revocable Trust owner variance section, variance under section 2.02.7.8.6 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a detached garage 10 feet from the edge of a wetland. Whereas 40 feet is required. The parcels located at 14 Acacia Street in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 4C lot 074 case number ZBA 2021-11.
Ben's turn.
Wait a second, Rod?
No, Rod just.
Second.
I got it.
Alright. We'll get to them. So motion made by Patrick, seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Same as before, you have 30-day window for appeals. Alright, thank you. And congratulations again on retirement.
Thank you very much.
Alright. So the next petition is Garrett and Gillian Soucy petitioner owner. Variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 87,268 square feet of lot area whereas 100,000 square feet is required. The parcels located at 12 Dodier Court in the R1 Residential by Soils, Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 7C lot 47-01 case ZBA 2021-12.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alexander Buchanan. I'm an attorney from Nashua. And I'm here on behalf of the applicants for case listed as number six on your agenda today. I'm also here on case number seven, eight, nine, and 10, which are all related. Three of them are variance requests. And two of them are appeal of an administrative decision. And I'd like the board, if the board would be so kind as to hear the appeal of the administrative decision first consolidated with both of them. And then if necessary, proceed to the variances.
Typically, what we do is we hear the variances before the appeals.
I, that, I'm unfamiliar with that policy.
No, that, that's okay.
But I think in this case, the, the appeal of the administrative decision precludes or precedes the need for the variance, particularly in this case. This case to me is pretty clear about the appeal of the administrative decision because there isn't really anything to decide. When you, when you look at the definition in the appeal, the appeal says in the definition of it. That the interests that the zoning ordinance is there to protect, okay? The, where you have the non-conformities. Result in no change to lot area depth or frontage. Those are the interests that the ordinance is trying to protect, to protect the public interest, which is the whole purpose of the zoning ordinance. And there's no change to those as a result of their proposal for the lot line. So it makes sense to really make a determination as whether you need to look at the variance, to a variance. I don't believe we need to look to a variance. The lots are going to be the same, no matter whether the variance is, the lot line goes through or not. Those impediments, those non-conformities are not changing. There's no change to the properties. So what is, do you are deciding? That's what I don't understand is why, if we were changing something, if we were changing the area of one lot. Or we were reducing the frontage on one lot, or changing some other zoning code aspect of some of the lot, then the public interest would be affected. But by our lot line relocation request, we're not changing those at all. They're staying the same. So to me, it makes sense to make a determination as to whether we need to even get to a variance.
I do agree with you. This isn't the first time that we've had this. But what I will do is I'll ask the board their thoughts. I guess with that being said, do you guys want to hear the appeals before the variance?
Well, the appeal of administrative decision is not something that we, that's a discussion on the board. That's nothing that the petitioner puts in.
Correct.
Right, that's, that's just us having that discussion. If we want to have that discussion up front, we can do that. It's up to you. But that's, that's not, that's not open for public discussion. That's just between us.
Exactly. So my question was, do you want to do that first?
I think it makes sense to do it first.
Sure.
Alright, we will do exactly that then.
So you, you don't require the petitioner to make any presentation like you do for the variances on the appeal of a decision?
Yeah, for an appeal of administrative decision.
You just rely on what was presented in the application and your own discussions?
Yes.
Correct.
I just want to understand.
Absolutely. So what I'll go ahead and do is I'll, I'll scratch item six for now, table that. And move on to items nine and 10. So I'll read them both in. Garrett and Gillian Soucy, appeal of administrative decision that determined pre-existing non-conforming lots of record. Are required to conform to current zoning requirements upon modification of the lot following a lot line adjustment. Even though such adjustments would result in no change to the lot area, depth, or frontage. Parcels located at 12 Dodier Court in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 7C lot 47-01 case 2021-15. And we will also be looking at.
I would look at them one at a time.
You want to do them one at a time?
Yeah, one at a time.
Alright. The only reason why I was going to read them in together is they were actually put together on the memo.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so the next one was item 10, Leonard and.
Mr. Chairman, there's an error in the agenda. I should have brought that up to you at the beginning, but for some reason, on number eight and number 10, they refer to Mr. Rosenfeld as Leonard when his name is Ronald.
Oh, good to know.
The application is right, I believe, in all of that. I think it just got carried over from number five where his name was Leonard as well.
I, I would agree with that, but thank you for pointing that out. So it's actually Ronald and.
Zelia.
Zelia Rosenfeld and the Rosenero Trust of 2014. Appeal of administrative decision that determined pre-existing non-conforming lots of record. Are required to conform to current zoning requirements upon modification of the lot following a lot line adjustment. Even though such adjustments would result in no change to lot area depth or frontage. Parcels located at 14 Dodier Court in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts. Tax map 7C lot 47-02 case ZBA 2021-15. So with that being said, what are the, what are the thoughts of the board on this?
I'm looking at a memo I've got here, actually an email. And while I understand the logic behind it, it appears that our legal counsel does not agree. Is that correct?
Are you referring to our counsel?
Yes.
Yeah, the, our counsel agrees with staff's interpretation that a non-conforming lot cannot be altered. I also want to add that I think the board's confusing appeal of administrative decision with a rehearing request. The apple can testify, just like a special exception or a variance.
Okay, thank you Casey. Alright, you're right, I didn't make, I apologize.
Alright, thank you for clarification. Alright, so with that being said, my apologies if you'd like to go ahead and explain why this would be best suited to be an appeal.
Well, as, as I indicated earlier, the definition itself lends to the conclusion that no. There's no necessity to review the non-conformities because they're going to stay there anyway, whether the lot line goes through or not. They're unaffected by it. So there's really nothing to decide. There's no interest, there's no public interest that's being impaired. As it relates to those non-conformities. We're not increasing them, we're not decreasing, they're staying the same. Just because we want to change a lot line, we shouldn't have to go to look at those. If this proposal was to modify any of those non-conformities at all, I wouldn't be here asking the board to do this. It's only because the lots, in terms of the non-conformities, are going to be no different before or after the granting of the variance.
So why, why, why are they changing the lot lines at all?
To take care of an encroachment where the fence built years ago encroaches on the Souces' lot. So we want to correct that by having the Souces' own, own property that's unaffected by the encroachment. And the Rosenfels to have, to own the property that their fence is on. The only thing it's going to do is rather than having a straight lot line between them, it's going to jog into the Rosenfeld property. If you're coming down from the street, it's going to jog into the Rosenfeld property on the right-hand side. And cut across and jut into the, to the Soucy property to move that to the Rosenfeld. And the acreage of the square footage, in this case, it's only about 1,000 feet, square feet, is just going swapping one side to the other. So the area in both lots is going to stay the same, and the frontage is totally unaffected by this as well. It has no relation to frontage whatsoever.
And this fence was built before the two of them moved in there?
I don't know when the fence was built, because I don't know, it was probably put in, it's a fence for the pool. And it was put in when, I'm sure when the pool was done, and I don't know the relationship of that to when the house is constructed. I believe the house is constructed shortly after these lots were approved in 1985.
Okay, so. So you're looking to, we're looking to rezone.
No.
The, let me, let me just, let me fashion it. I may not be saying it the right way, but just, let me try to, try to get my head around all this. Because this does seem a little academic. So they basically, in order to get the fence, to make the fence legitimate. They want to, the town or the community development has said that the lots have to be conforming. And they're not conforming now.
Essentially, yes. That's what they're telling us.
Okay.
Okay. And I would agree with them if we were changing the lot such that it affected those non-conformities. But as I said, they're unaffected. They stay the same. The Soucy lots are going to be non-conforming because of acreage as it is now, and it's going to be non-conforming by acreage when it's done. But no less and no more. Both lots are non-conforming by frontage, and the frontage is not changing either way. The Souces', I think, are low by about 40 feet, and the Rosenfels are low by about 50 feet, somewhere in those, that neck of the woods. But they, you know, the lots have been there. They were approved in 1985. These are not unapproved lots. It's just because of the town came along and said, we need to increase these area and, and frontage for public interest. Okay, granted, but the ordinance itself protects the, the landowner there, okay? Because it gives them the non-conformity under 305. That allows them to continue even though they're non-conforming lots. And if we were coming in and doing, changing a use, putting a building in a lot, in a, in a sideline or something like that, yeah, maybe these items would come into play. But what we're asking to do, does this little triangular swap, which is in the, the plan is in the materials. Doesn't touch upon frontage or area. It's, everything stays the same other than the lot line changes. We have, instead of a straight one, we have an irregular one, if you will, although it's regular in the sense that it maintains the same acreage.
I, I absolutely understand your point.
And as far as, I, the, I'm not sure that the council's opinion was based upon whether or not. They understood that it was an equal swap of acreage. And furthermore, they, they seem to get hung up on the lot aspect of it. These are approved lots. They were approved in 1985.
They were, but we do frequently hear petitions from people that have had properties built under one zoning era. And then now they have to come back for variances. So I, I would say that.
Maybe you do, but it doesn't mean, mean that it should continue to go that way. I just, that's our, I, I just think that they're creating work that doesn't need to be created. They're creating work by me having to come in here and appeal the decision, and if I lose on that, to deal with the variances and go through that, which.
Well.
The circumstances just don't justify it, is what I'm saying. There are other circumstances, and I can't speak to those cases that you hear those on, because I'm unfamiliar with them. But in this case, it seems to me that a little common sense applied to it would save everybody a whole lot of headaches. And hopefully, it'll save somebody in the future.
And that's, that's the thing. I think that the town is looking to have it conform, be where the fence does end up on someone's property. That it ends up on someone else's property, even though the, the two current neighbors are in agreeance. For what it's worth, I'm assuming that the town is looking at it, you know, when those, when those, there's two other families or two other people living in those homes. Then it could become an issue.
I don't understand what's going to become an issue.
Well, you're saying that the fence is on someone else's property, right?
That's the way it is now, yeah.
Okay. And so they have to change the property lines, although the total square footage of the property is going to remain the same. They just have to readjust the lines so that the fence is conforming, correct?
That's what we're doing, yes. We're readjusting the lines to make the.
To make the fence conforming. Right now, the two families that live in these houses don't seem to have an issue with, with the fence. Or with each other, correct?
No, they were in agreement. It was discovered because one lot was doing some work on it, they discovered it.
So the town looks at, so, and I understand what you're saying. So with the town look, I'm guessing the way that the town is seeing this. Is that that's okay in the current. But 10 years from now, if there's two different families there, then it's a different issue, because then you have a family.
When they buy the lot, they're going to know that the fence is on their land, or it's not on their land.
Right.
Right now, they don't know that.
And that could be an issue down the road for selling, for somebody purchasing or selling the home.
That may be true, but it still doesn't change the non-conformities. They're still there, and they'll still be there.
But if you readjust the lot lines so that they are conforming, that, or that they are conforming to meet this fence requirement, then. Then you, then you don't have the issue there.
I wouldn't use the word conforming at all. I would say it, what, what you're doing is you are making a lot line adjustment to accommodate. An encroachment of a fence on a neighbor's property.
Right. That's what I'm trying to say.
Right.
And those in no way affect.
I don't see how in the future that will affect them unless we don't do, or they don't do anything. If they don't do anything.
That's why I'm saying if they don't do anything, there's, there could be the potential in the future.
So therefore, he's saying they want to do a lot line adjustment, so there isn't an issue in the future. Now, whether we do it by overriding the administrative decision, or whether we let that hold based on what our attorneys have said. And therefore, he goes through the process of asking for, I believe it's two variances, which obviously makes sense. But either one will solve the problem for the future, correct?
Right. And the variances are a paper trail to make sure that it was done and is done correctly.
Or you pick up the fence and move it, which we did on our lot when we discovered it was on the neighbor's property.
Yeah, I did the same.
Well, I, I can tell you, they looked at that, and it was not a reasonable way of doing things, given the way that it was laid out. They also could do it by easement, but we'd prefer to do it, and they prefer to do it, by a lot line relocation, because it's more permanent. And you don't run into the issues of, yeah, it's still my property, but you get to use it.
I agree with that.
And it just, that creates more of a problem. So we wanted to do it the right way, which is to do a lot line relocation. And if it affected those public interests that are being protected by the ordinance, frontage and area. I wouldn't be here asking you to do this. The only reason I'm asking you is because there's no change to the lot. We're not building anything. We're not putting anything inside a setback. We're just swipping some land, swapping some land between two owners, between two abutting owners. Since everything stays the same, that it seems extra work to be here to do that and go through the variance as well. Although I'm prepared to do, to do that.
Okay. You have something, Rod?
Yep. If, if we were to approve this, and the property, one of the properties were to go on sale next year, six years, 10 years. Would what we are approving be part of the new surveyors? So it would show on the surveyor?
That would be a question to Casey.
Okay.
So you're, you're saying if you approve this administrative appeal, is that your question?
Right. Does the changes have to legally be made for the surveyors of their property?
It would have to go on the deed.
Yeah, so the, the lot line would have to actually get adjusted, is that your question?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so their, their next step regardless is to go to the planning board to get the lot line adjusted. And once that plan is signed, it gets recorded at the registry of deeds, and then it becomes a legal lot change.
I think, I think it sounded like Patrick was asking similar.
Well, I, I see, I see both sides of it. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
And what Len said, and I also see what the town's saying, so. And what Lynn said, and I also see what the town's saying. So I think the town, by the sound of it, the town is looking to, you just, the, the variances, if approved, give the, you know, kind of, give that paper trail, give legitimacy, cover all the bases, there's no ambiguity and all of that. That's, that's how I see it from the town's side of it. And and I think that's how the town is seeing it as well.
And I just want to remind the board that when you vote on a appeal of administrative decision, this is the only type of decision that the board makes that sets a precedent for future interpretations of the ordinance.
That's actually my, my concern in this case. So if we were to appeal these decisions, what precedence does that even set?
We would, we would probably have to talk to our council, but it would probably mean that we would no longer interpret a change to a nonconforming lot that does not decrease the size, to need a variance.
And that's, and that's, with Barimac, there's a lot of nonconforming lots.
But in fairness, is that a bad thing?
I think you open the door to a lot of stuff that you, or.
Only situations where a lot line is adjusted and the two parcels remain the same size. That's the only thing we change, and to be honest with you.
So if someone has a large, nonconforming lot, and they want to divide it up and make one really small, one really big?
That would be different than this. This is a lot line adjustment where the properties are not changing in size.
Okay.
That's, I guess, I I see both sides of this, and I, I kind of, on the one, I am, I'm not a fan of appealing administrative decisions in general. But at the same time, I mean, do you really want to hear?
Ben, what are your thoughts?
Well, if granting the appeal sets a precedent, future actions, I don't think that's the right move to make, and I'd rather spend the time doing individual variances.
I, I agree with you, but taking it from the other side, because that's honestly where where I am. But taking it from the other side, the, the precedence that would be set would be a lot line division where the lot line is adjusted, but there is no change in size to either property. So the precedents would only be cases just like this, where for some reason, two neighbors have to swap a piece of land. And I, I know we've done this through variance in the past, but the question is.
I'm not sure that's entirely true.
Mm-hmm.
What we're doing is, the administrative decision said the fact that it's a change to a nonconforming lot. It doesn't specify that there's no differences or anything else. It just says a change to a nonconforming lot requires.
But the condition in this.
So somebody else could come with a change to a nonconforming lot and said, well, you gave it to them. Yeah, just because there was equal land, you're still changing a nonconforming lot.
Back to my original argument.
I think that's what our attorney is saying, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna do that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, but the, the point of it is, is that while the lot itself is changing, it's not changing any of the nonconformities. It's not making it worse for the town.
Oh, we're not worried at all about what you're asking. We're worried about what precedence will it set.
The precedence, I think, is just, is that, when it doesn't otherwise affect the interests of the town as set forth in the ordinance requirements, we didn't, we're not violating anything any further by doing it. When you have those circumstances and everything remains the same, that's the precedent you're setting, and I don't see that as a bad thing at all. Again, if if we were changing any of the things that the town's trying to protect, or use to protect the town, frontage, size, things of that nature, then yes, because they are being changed, they are being affected. And it would be appropriate for the variance process to determine whether that should use, the lot line relocation should be allowed.
Oh, I, I agree with you.
Complicated, I don't think.
No, no, and it's not. I, I agree with you, but the, the huge but is, is I, I don't have our legal counsel here to tell me what precedence would be set, one way or the other. And so I personally, I, I, I'm, I, I'm indifferent on this. And and I'll, you know, I'll be honest and say that I'm not a fan of appealing administrative decisions for that reason alone. However, it's, we've definitely done it in the past. It's just, I personally am not a huge fan of it, because I'm not a lawyer. I don't understand the precedence that it's setting. So, I guess. I mean, I, I don't know.
My thought is that if the precedent's set for this particular type of situation, a fifty-fifty, where no change in lot capacity is changing, if that was the precedence, I, I would like it. However, like Lynn said, if it's just a change to a nonconforming, and we give a go ahead to any, or potentially give the go ahead to any change to a nonconforming, that would concern me. And we, and we don't have that answer, do we, Casey?
Exactly. Forgot to turn my mic on. Are you saying exactly what kind of precedent it would set?
Yeah, that's, that's ultimately the question, because.
Where, I agree with he, what he's trying to do. They're not changing the lot capacity, one side. And I think that's okay. My concern is, if we approve that, do we open that up that any nonconforming, any representative coming in and, and repeating? This.
And if you're saying specifically, if you grant this administrative appeal, yes, that's possibly the case.
Okay. That's my concern.
So it has nothing to do with your particular lot. It has to do with, and it has nothing to do with this particular case. It has to do with the case that, that could come up in October of this year, or October of next year.
It's future announced.
You know, when somebody wants to take a nonconforming lot and make some changes to it, and we set the precedent.
They make it more nonconforming, this wouldn't apply.
Make it.
You don't know that.
Yeah.
How can we, what, what could we do, Casey, to, to, to get resolution on this?
Do the variances.
Yeah.
You can.
Well, we can do the variances, but is this something that we should, should we spend some time taking a look at things like this?
Listen, the way that it's worded is, appeal of administrative decision that determined pre-existing, nonconforming lots of record are required to conform to current zoning requirements, which means that, the way that I interpret it, and the way, and, and, and when it comes to lea, to the legalese, and the way that people are going to return, determine that is that if we say, no, it doesn't, that, that, that we withhold, and we, we, we deny the, whatever, deny the appeal, say, no, it doesn't, that means that now we're saying that nonconforming lots of record are not required to conform to current zoning.
If they don't change.
It, it doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't say that.
There's nothing in there that says it doesn't make it.
You read my appeal. I made it clear in that, that we're, we're only talking.
I'm reading the appeal. I've read the appeal word for word.
We're only, we're only talking about circumstances where there's no change, other than the lot line itself.
Yeah, but that's not what, that's not what the, that's not what the appeal reads. That's not, it says, nonconforming lots of record are required to conform to concurrent zoning requirements upon modification of the lot following a lot line adjustment, even though such adjustments would result in no change to the lot area, depth and frontage.
No change.
You're right. But I can also see where, and I think you could see that as well, where that could be twisted.
I.
He's an attorney, he understands how to do that.
Yeah.
Rich, if you would like, you can request legal counselor, counsel, and have this continue to the next meeting. Including the variance cases.
I'll be, I, I guess that's. That's actually exactly what I want to do.
I think we can give him a choice, if he could, we can delay this for legal counsel for the appeal, or continue with the variance.
So. I, I, I would say that, from me specifically, I, I would not be in favor of this appeal as it stands now, without talking to our, our legal counsel. So I guess we, we have a couple of options. We could table all of this till the next month and get opinions from legal counsel. We can vote on the appeal. I don't see it having a likelihood of passing, but we haven't voted yet. Or we can withdraw it and, and just do the variances. Either way, the, if we table this to talk to our legal counsel, that would ultimately table the variances as well, meaning no decisions made tonight. So with that being said, do you, or would you rather that we table this and, and talk to our counsel about that? Or, or just vote it, vote through it?
You're here now.
You can vote.
Okay. In that case. Do I hear a motion?
Lynn, you want to do that?
I'm going to find it. We've got two here that we're doing, right?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, you can do them both at the same time, Lynn.
So the appeals are number nine and number ten, correct?
Yes.
I'm going to combine them in one motion. Can I do that, Casey?
Yeah, just be very clear.
Yep. I'm going to.
Oh, actually, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
I, this is a public hearing, and so you, Rich, you should state for the record that there was time for anyone to testify.
Do we need to open a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm glad I stopped you.
On the appeals?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do that.
Open up for the public.
The public.
All right, well, you're right. All right, so what I'll do is, I, I'll open it to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the appeal?
Either appeal.
Either appeal. Is there anyone that would like to speak against the appeal? All right, I'll close the public portion. Anyone want to make a motion?
I will move that we, in the instance of Garrett and Gillian Susi, appeal of administrative, we, we deny the appeal. Is that the correct phrase? We deny the appeal?
I think so.
Okay. You get the idea. That determined, pre-existing, nonconforming lots of record are required to conform to current zoning requirements upon modification of the lot, following a lot line adjustment, even though such adjustments would result in no change to the lot area, depth or frontage. The parcel is located at twelve Dotier Court in the R one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts, tax map seven C, lot oh four seven hyphen oh one, case number ZBA twelve, uh, twenty twenty-one hyphen fifteen. And also deny the appeal of administrative decision that determined, pre-existing, nonconforming lots of record are required to conform to current zoning requirements upon modification of the lot, following a lot line adjustment, even though such adjustments would result in no change to the lot depth or frontage. The parcel is located at fourteen Dotier Court in the R one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts, tax map seven C, lot oh four seven hyphen oh two, case number ZBA two zero two one hyphen fifteen. This is number nine and number ten on the agenda dated May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
You want to read in the name of number nine, or number ten?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Ronald.
Number ten was Ronald and Zelia, Rosenfeld petitioner and Rosenfeld Trust of two thousand fourteen owner.
All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Rodney. All in favor of the denial of the appeals?
Aye.
Aye. So five zero zero, the denial is carried forward. So what I'll go ahead and do now is just read in the three variances, so we can continue this discussion, the variances. So item six is Garrett and Gillian Susi petitioner-owner variance under section three point oh two of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with eighty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-eight square feet of lot area, whereas a hundred thousand square feet is required. The parcel's located at twelve Dotier Court in the R one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts, tax map seven C, lot forty-seven dash oh one, case ZBA twenty twenty-one dash twelve. Also Garrett and Gillian Susi variance under section three point oh two of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with two hundred forty-one point three three feet of frontage, whereas two hundred and fifty feet is required. The parcel's located at twelve Dotier Court in the R one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts, tax map seven C, lot forty-seven dash oh one, case ZBA twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, as well as Ronald and Zilia Rosenfeld petitioner and Rosenero Trust of two thousand fourteen owner, variance under section three point oh two of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with two hundred feet of frontage, whereas two hundred and fifty feet is required. The parcel's located at fourteen Dotier Court in the R one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts, tax map seven C, lot forty-seven dash oh two, case ZBA twenty twenty-one dash fourteen. And I, I understand that you're looking to just read them all at the same time, so if you want to go ahead and step through the five criteria.
Thank you. With regards to items number one and two of the criteria, first not, that it not be contrary to the public interest to grant the variance, and that it be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Traditionally, customer practice has been to discuss these two together, because they are so interrelated. In determining whether the public interest is affected, is to determine whether it would unduly and to a marked degree conflict with the ordinance, such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. And to get past that, there are two further tests and questions to ask. Does the approval alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and does it threaten the public health, safety or welfare? And I think in this case, it's clearly that it will not. There is going to be no changes to the physical lots, only the layout of the lots. There's no changes to the frontage, there's no changes to the area, they both remain the same. It will in no way change the na, character of that neighborhood at all. Consequently, it's not going to adversely affect public health, safety or welfare. It's clear that these lots have been in existence for over thirty-five years, without complaint as to their, their nonconformities, and are doubtful that there would be any going forward in the future. For those reasons, test prongs one and two of the variance have been met. Are there any questions?
Please proceed.
The third one is whether granting the variance would do substantial justice. The court over the years has indicated that this is simply a balancing test. You have to bear, balance the loss to the individual lot owner, such that it is not outweighed by a gain to the general public. It would be an injustice. There could be loss here if this, these variances were denied. They would continue to have the properties that are nonconforming in a different way by the encroachment and things of that nature, and it would prevent them from the reasonable use of their property. The denial of the variance, by the same token, would create no gain. The public's interest in this property in terms of the conditions and circumstances that the ordinance is to protect and prevent are not going to be affected whether it's granted or not granted, so it should be granted. For those reasons, we believe that the granting of the variance would not, would do substantial justice. Are there any questions with that one? The fourth one is that granting of the variance will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. This is probably the simplest one in this case, because in order for the properties around them to be diminished in value, there must be some change to the lot so that it has some impact on the affected other lots. There's no change to the subject lots that would have any kind of an impact, one way or the other, on the surrounding lots. And consequently, the values will remain the same, granted or not granted, so therefore, it should be granted. And for that reason, we believe that it does not diminish the value of surrounding properties. Any questions with that one? And the last one is always the tough one, it's the hardship question, whether literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship to each applicant. To determine whether there's unnecessary hardship, you have to examine whether there's a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purposes and the specific application of the provisions to the lots. In this case, the, the use is not changing, it's just some of the numbers regarding the lots. And in this case, they are not changing. The area is staying the same, the depths are staying the same, and the frontage is staying the same. So to deny the variance would certainly impair the property, the property owner's ability to use the property for permitted use, which is as a residence. It's not going to cause any problems with any public interest near the lots or otherwise. And then part B of it is whether an unnecessary hardship. And then part B of it is whether an unnecessary hardship exists as special conditions of the property prevent it from being reasonably used in strict conformity with the ordinance. The noncon, the special conditions of these properties is their nonconformities. Unlike other lots in the area, they have to come in and get a variance, the other lots do not. They're incapable of being modified to accommodate the current standards in the ordinance. So consequently, the question becomes, is the use reasonable otherwise? It's reasonable, it's a permitted use in the zone. It's been there for all 35 years without any issues. It's not going to change simply because of the lot line relocation. For that reason, we believe we showed unnecessary hardship by both prongs, and that we've shown that the five criteria that are required for variance for all three of these applications have been presented and shown, and should be, and the variances should be granted. I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
No.
I think we all have a very good understanding of the property, so, or the two properties. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of these petitions? Anyone looking to speak against these petitions? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public.
I would recommend voting on each of them separately, just to, just to make sure, just to keep everything straight and clean. So I'm going to do a motion to, a motion to approve Garrett and Gillian Soucy, petitioner, owner, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 87,268 square feet of lot area, whereas 100,000 square feet is required. Parcel is located at 12 Dodier Court, in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 7C, Lot 047-01, Case Number ZBA 2021-12.
All right, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Rodney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, 5-0-0, that variance passes.
I'll keep going. Motion to approve Garrett and Joyce Soucy, petitioner, owner, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 2.43 feet of frontage, whereas 250 feet is required. The parcel is located at 12 Dodier Court. Just want to make sure there's no, oh, there are staff recommendations, okay. 12 Dodier Court, where was I? In the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 7C, Lot 047-01, Case Number ZBA 2021-12. With, should this be approved, the individual will meet staff recommendations.
We voted 12, this is 13.
Oh, that's 13, okay, sorry. ZBA 2021-13. And hopeful, the request variances in the ZBA Case 2021-14 shall be obtained, and the petitioner shall obtain final approval from the planning board for the proposed lot line adjustment. Staff recommendations.
All right, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Rodney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0.
All right, and. Last but not least, motion to approve Ronald and Zelia Rosenfeld, petitioner and Rosenero Trust, 2014, owner, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a lot following a lot line adjustment with 200 feet of frontage, whereas 250 feet is required. Parcel is located at 14 Dodier Court, in the R1 Residential by Soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 7C, Lot 047-02, Case Number ZBA 2000, sorry, 2021-14, with staff recommendations that the petitioner shall obtain final approval from the planning board for the proposed lot line adjustments.
All right, I heard Lynn, so motion made by Patrick, seconded by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so all three variances have passed. Thank you very much for your time.
Before we move on, should we amend that first one that Ben?
Yes, I'll put that into record. The first petition, the first variance that I read for, which was Case Number ZBA 2000, or 2021-12, what is that? Staff recommendations.
Yes.
Following staff recommendations.
Okay.
Just so that's in. All right. And we're done.
All right. And so my. All right, thank you. My question to, as I've completely lost my notes here. My. My question to Casey was, are we voting on the request for rehearing tonight?
Yes, so this is just a decision of whether or not to rehear the date, this case on a later date.
Understood, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that, because normally it was, I think I mentioned earlier, it's usually listed.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that decision was made about the agenda.
Okay, so.
What was the new information to, for the request?
There was no new information, it was just a rehashing of everything we discussed.
Exactly.
But I don't think there's any reason to do a rehearing.
So nothing's changed?
Correct. There are no material changes.
Well, I can't really.
So that, one of the issues from that meeting was that the owners were not clearly identified. However, the owners were, I, I think it's a matter of perspective as to what he was looking to see on the.
What are we discussing, Mills?
Yeah.
Yeah. So. So the, who wants to rehear?
So the things that we discussed, you know, going back to this, were the, the, who owned the property? Who the actual people were that were in ownership, although it was, I believe, a company, not a person. The actual makeup of the unit going from business to apartment.
Oh yeah, so, yeah, where it became more apartments than stores. Right?
Yes.
That was the change? And they increased the amount of the condominium, okay. They dropped a major component of the retail, in restaurant, didn't they, or something?
Restaurant, no, just the, just the retail space.
But again, those are, those are planning board issues, those aren't ZBA issues.
Right.
Correct, so the, and that's, that's what we had mentioned in the meeting. So technically, there's, there's no, there's no material change to look at, it's a rehash of what we discussed.
And in, as far as, although, and I, and I did make comments about the mixed use, and it was approved, mixed use, and is it really mixed use now, and all that, I did make the comment, but Lynn brings up a good point, that's, that's planning, that's not ZBA. So he needs to actually take this to. Planning.
And we did say that.
Yeah, I think we, yeah.
I think the two things relative to us are state, the location for the proposed change, and properly identify the owners, which has been done. So there's no cause for rehearing. At least I don't see any cause.
I, I'm, I'm in, I agree with Lynn.
Oh, so do I.
Oh, since I've been doing it all night, I'll just go through with this one. I guess I have to make a motion and all that?
Yes.
Yes, we do want a motion.
A motion to deny Michael Mills' appellate request for rehearing regarding Case Number 2021-05, in which the zoning board granted a variance under Section 2.02.4D of the zoning ordinance to permit a mixed-use development conditional use permit, CUP, to be sought from the planning board at a higher residential density than was originally approved by the variance in 2015 on a lot in the I-2 Industrial District. Now, do I need, do I need to say why we're denying the repeal? Or? Casey?
You can just put it simply that there is no new information presented.
The denial for the appeals based on no new information presented to warrant a rehearing.
Seconded. All right, motion made by Patrick, seconded by Rodney. All in favor of the denial of the rehearing? Aye.
Aye.
5-0-0. I do have kind of a question for Casey, actually. If, is it possible in future appeals to, we seem to have this discussion a lot whenever we're dealing with an appeal of administrative decision. Is there any way to get just a quick blurb from legal on what the ramification is? If we, if we do grant the appeal? Because there have been times where we have granted an appeal for things that, that we probably should have. But it's tough, because this is one where I would have really liked to know, what exactly is the precedence that's being set?
Yeah, more specifically.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I can talk to Tim Felton and see what he thinks. I know in this case, the memo, it did mention some previous advice that we got from town council, but it probably wasn't specific to this case, just to similar cases in the past. So I see your point.
I mean, I'd actually almost like to go a little step further and say, anytime our legal is talked to about a case that we're working, if we could get, you know, a kind of a breakdown of, you know, what is it going to affect, and what's, you know, so we, that we know, because sometimes. Yeah, because sometimes we hear, oh, well, the legal advises this, but we don't know why they advise this, or what the ramifications are if we were to make that change. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I'll certainly talk to Tim about that.
I was actually referring more to the cheat sheet, because I feel, I feel uninformed when, 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 I mean, granted, I think this is the first person in a while that has really demanded, you know, hearing the, hearing an appeal. But, you know, it's one of those things where I don't, if I don't know what the precedence that's going to be set, I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of an appeal. So I don't, I don't want to, I'd rather be more informed in future appeals as to what precedents would be set.
I agree.
Right, yeah, and in a situation where you're uncomfortable making a decision, you can always continue it so that before the next upcoming meeting, we could get.
But that's not fair to the petitioner.
Right.
It's not fair for the petitioner to have to be continued, because we don't, we didn't do our, it appears to the petitioner that we didn't do our due diligence, when the reality is I just, I'm not interacting with the, with our counsel directly. So any, anything I can get from the counsel on future appeals, I think would be huge. So if that's possible, I don't know. Any other potential items? I know something that Rodney brought up, which is actually a good point, is now that we're back in session, is there anyone that would, that can reach out to Leonard to see if he wants to come back in as an alternate?
I don't, I don't have contact with Lenny, so.
I can talk to him.
Oh, you do have contact with him?
Well, yeah. Just like anybody else does. And I'm happy to talk to him, but I know there's also been some recruiting efforts going on.
Oh, do we have a, do we have candidates?
There are some potentials coming in.
Oh, okay.
For ZB, for alternates?
Both. Both ZBA and planning.
Well, I'm more concerned about ZBA selfishly, but yeah. So we have one alternate position open right now, right?
Two, I think.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. I feel like we've never really had three alternates, and if we did, it was a short period of time.
We did, when you first joined the board, we actually had three alternates.
You're right, when I.
Yeah, that was one of the times we.
That was 10 years ago.
Yeah, that was one of the last times we had a full board.
Lenny and Drew.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It can be done.
Anything else?
On the matter of the minutes for Wednesday, April 28th, I move we approve as printed.
Second. All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Rodney, all in favor?
Aye. Anything else from staff?
5-0-0.
No, nothing else from staff.
Ben, do you want the biggie?
The St. Gobain, what's happening to this?
We are going to be hearing that next month.
Next month.
So that was continued to the June meeting.
June, okay.
And I'm guessing that's because the documents were already taken care of at the last minute when they, what was the situation? I don't remember hearing anything over email.
I just got an email that was canceled.
Yeah, why was it canceled, do you know?
Uh, no, I actually don't know the details of why it was moved to the June meeting.
Huh, okay.
What's the date of our June meeting?
June 30th.
30th.
I believe. Have it written down. June 30th, yep.
Does anyone make the final motion?
I make a motion, we close our meeting.
Motion made by Ben, seconded by Rodney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was anyone on the state webinar on the PFOAs last night?
No.
It was very good. It ran for two and a half hours.
Wow, oh wow.
And, but they provided 58 pages of slides.